Good evening and I want to thank both candidates very much for showing up. Today is Monday, April 4th, and we are going to conduct our endorsement interview for City Council Ward 2. And this is being sponsored by Patsy Brown, candidate for Clark County Public Administrator. I just want to give everybody a brief overview of how this process works. We'll start first by having the panel members give a 30-second introduction of ourselves. Then the candidates will be given two minutes to introduce themselves in a way they are asking for our endorsement. Once a panel member asks you a question, you'll be given two minutes to answer their question. I won't be rude and stop you mid-sentence, but at some point, if you don't wrap up pretty quickly, then I will ask you to stop. At the end of the question and answer portion, each candidate will be given two minutes to make a closing statement. Okay, I'll start first by introducing myself. My name is Jim Jonas, Director of Veterans of Politics, and I also co-host our podcast with Steve Sanson.
Hi, my name is Teresa Sandoval. I'm currently a student at UNLV, and I'm looking for my law degree eventually. I plan to run for Assemblywoman someday, and I'm happy to be here.
Hi, I'm Michael Broadway. I'm a real estate broker specializing in commercial and vacant land, and I have done several of these, so I'm happy to be here.
Okay, I want to start with what you two decide. Which one wants to start first?
Which mic would you like me to use?
That one, sorry. And thank you for coming. The reason why Victoria is trying to figure out which mic to use is because you two came, the other two that RSVP did not. So Victoria, go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you for having me.
Oh, Victoria, yours has an on and off switch, sorry.
Thank you for inviting me here. I always love coming here and introducing myself, and thank you for your service. I am the granddaughter, daughter, and wife of a veteran. I'm the current councilwoman for Ward 2. I love doing community service. I sit on the DEC Committee and the Audit Committee. I'm a former state legislature who was the Southern Majority Whip. I was on the Commerce and Labor Judiciary and Legislative Ops Committee. Was a businesswoman prior to that. Got involved with politics because I thought we needed someone who could represent the business community, and I now really love public service. So thank you for having me.
My name's Alan Bigelow. I am a retired Army Sergeant. I spent 24 years serving this country between the Nevada Guard and the United States Army. I've spent four years as a Deputy Sheriff and currently serving 18 years as a firefighter. I've written legislation for veterans that established a veteran cemetery in another community. I'm currently a small business owner, and I've been working through the COVID crisis to make sure people get their home loans and things finished so they could get, you know, the great rates that we had. It's one of the few notaries that would actually suit up in a biosuit and go out and meet people in their homes. I've been a lifelong resident of Las Vegas. I grew up here. My family has been here since 1963. We had about 60,000 people back then. And really what I'm running for is to bring good things for our children, our grandchildren, and make Las Vegas great again like it once was.
Thank you both very much. Either one of the panel members want to start with questions, or do you want me to go? Okay, so my first question, and remember, this isn't a debate, so neither one of you can ask each other questions. Please direct your answers to us. So Alan, I've known you for a little while now, and you've been doing a good job. You've been out in the community and working hard. One of the things, though, that kind of disturbed me, and I need you to respond to this because I've heard it from other people as well. You went in front of the current city council, and you said that you were not recruited to run. No one asked you to run. However, after doing research, I have found out that in fact, a current city councilwoman actually recruited you to run for this office. I'm going to give you some leeway on this so you can explain this because that is very disturbing to me. Because the one thing that really drives me crazy about politics is non-transparency. So can you please answer my question of who recruited you to run? Am I right or wrong in that? Because I've done my research, and I know that a current city councilwoman recruited you to run against Victoria Seaman.
Well, I'm going to absolutely disagree with you on that. I've actually spoke about this for about three years, and that can be verified by talking to a current gentleman that's running for the Congress and at Sam Peters. When he and I first met, I discussed running for city council or some kind of an office here in Las Vegas three years ago. As far as any city council members, I hadn't met any of them until this past December when I attended a GOP candidate conference, and that's the first time I'd actually met any of them. It was for about two minutes where I took a picture. And since then, of course, you make friendships and things, but no one's ever recruited me to run for any office here.
Okay, thank you very much for answering that question. I appreciate it. I know it's a tough question. Now, Mrs. Seaman, my question for you is, you've actually been accused by several individuals of being very hard and disrespectful to your staff. And that's something that kind of frustrates me because it's almost like, I hate to name-drop here, but it's kind of like Joe Lombardo, our current sheriff. His troopers do not like him because he is mean and abusive to them. So if you are elected to this seat, will you change your behavior? Or I need you to respond to that, please. So you get a chance to explain that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that question. Well, my Chief of Staff, who is with me here tonight, has been with me since I got elected, and I think he would disagree with you, as well as my other Special Assistant, Brianna Ramirez, who has been with me since I got elected. Brian Balthazar, our former assistant, is now working on my campaign. So I don't know what to say, except it's a lot of hearsay.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to my other panel members. And I want to thank both of you for answering those tough questions. I just wanted to get that out of the air. Those are rumors, and both of you were very classy in responding to those rumors. I just wanted that to get cleared up right away. Thank you.
So my question would also be for you, Mrs. Seaman. I was looking into you. I've looked at your website. I've done my research. And you vowed to try and resolve the ongoing litigation since Saroka resigned in March of 2019, and you have not been successful. So what do you think that you're going to be doing differently from here on out?
Thank you for that question because a lot of people don't really understand what's going on. Badlands is what I assume you're talking about. It's been going on for six years. I've been in office for almost three, not quite. And my goal was to bring the parties together to settle. I have tirelessly done that. Anybody will tell you that at the city. You need four votes in order to do any kind of settlement. We have gotten together over and over at my request with city manager, the council, the city attorney, to the point where, you know, they probably dread my phone calls. But I have forced them to come together as much as possible to talk to the other council members, and they just don't feel that at this time there is a willingness to take it out of the courts. It is in the courts, and unless the parties come together and we have four votes, it's not going to get settled outside of the court. But that doesn't mean, if you know me, if you hear about me, I'm relentless, and I will continue to ask the parties to come together, especially as we go through the litigation. One of the things you need to understand is four of the council members that were there at the time that they voted against Badlands are still on the council. So thank you so much for asking that and clearing the air for me.
All right, so I'm going to reach out on that, follow up on that. How did that end up in eminent domain? Is that the status of it currently?
The status on one of the three lawsuits is that the last judge said that it was a taking on a particular parcel. And the city wanted to appeal it because they believed the judge was wrong, and the only way that I would agree to allow that is if we agreed to sit and try to settle it and meet with the attorneys, in which they did. Both parties got together. I actually called the developer. I called, I put the city attorneys and the manager and said, this is what we're going to do. This is the only way that I will appeal it is to have the time to settle. And that did happen, only no settlement was agreed by either the developer or the city. And once again, you have to have four council members who agree to settle it.
Is there currently a $30 million judgment?
Absolutely. I think it's 33 million plus 11 million in attorney fees, and it is on appeal, and there are outstanding other lawsuits. And that's why I've been so vociferous from the beginning and in the newspaper, and will talk to reporters to urge my council members to come together and be cohesive and settle the matter.
Okay, I can appreciate that as a real estate broker. One more question. Can you explain what happened between you and Michelle Fiori?
I was assaulted by Michelle Fiori, and right now it's in HR, and there's an investigation going on, and justice is slow, and going through the steps is what I always believe is the proper procedure.
Hey, Alan, would you like to respond about the Badlands issue? And just give us an understanding of what you know about that? Because that is like the key thing that's going on right now in Ward 2 specifically.
Ward 2's got a lot of issues, not necessarily just the Badlands, but there are some others. The totals right now are actually closer to $55 million on the last count. What started out actually was a property dispute, and it violated Nevada Constitution in several places, and it should never have been put into the city's hands to start with. So that's the short version.
What do you feel that you'll do differently than your competitors to resolve the issues in Ward 2?
I'm more of a hands-on guy. Like I said, I was Army Sergeant, and I tend to get into the things and get muddy. I like to get in there. I like to spend time talking to the people, spending time working with the people. It's not about me. It's about the people in Las Vegas and Ward 2, and that's where we have to focus on things, not on getting our picture taken as a councilman or being somebody that's all important. It's about serving the people.
I would also like to take the time to thank you for your service as well. Thank you.
All right, so now we'll switch gears and get more into, stop the hearsay. I want to thank you both for clearing those up, though. It's greatly appreciated. So one of my big issues when it comes to city council is building permits and permit regulations in general. It's very confusing for any new developer or anybody that wants to add on to their homes to get a permit because Las Vegas has one set of standards, North Las Vegas has another, the county has another, and then Henderson has another, and it is very confusing. So when you two are elected, and I've actually brought this up to the current city council, when one of you gets elected, would you be willing to reach out to your peers, other city council people in Boulder City, Henderson, North Las Vegas, to try to streamline this process? And to clarify, I'll give you an example. So when we added a fence, the county requires it to be six inches deep. City of Las Vegas is three. North Las Vegas is eight. Henderson is four and a half. Boulder City is six. It takes a long time to get through that process. Would either one of you be willing to try to work with your peers and other municipalities to correct this? Victoria, go ahead.
Yes, I already do that with most ordinances and most things. Right now, we're working on animal issues. We've had a lot of abuse, and we do work very closely with my peers in North Las Vegas, and the county now is going to start looking at some of the stuff that I'm implementing so we can streamline it. And as far as building, yes, we do. When there are certain things that come up on the council, we just had something a couple of months ago that's very different in the city as opposed to the county or North Las Vegas. And in emerging issues, I've asked that we look at what they're doing and see if we can't streamline it. I think it's very important to look at other areas now. It's not always a one-size-fits-all, but in most issues, we can find some commonalities and work together. That's one of the things I love about my job is being able to have those relationships with my counterparts in other municipalities.
North Las Vegas has a great program for businesses. You come in, it's a one-stop shop. You get told everything you need to do. Your business is in and out, and you're pretty much in business in 90 days of when you're doing it. As far as building construction, things like that, we have an international building code that most of the nation goes by. We have an international fire code that we go by. These are things that are very standard things, and as long as everybody's working on the same standard, on the same page, with the same building material, there shouldn't be any confusion, and it's easy to fix.
Okay, thank you. I got one more question on this. So the city council in Las Vegas has a city manager and a planning commission. And it's been my experience dealing with the city manager and planning commission that basically, it's almost like, how to put, it's almost like Family Court, right? It's where if you have enough money to pay for an attorney that is in good with the planning commission or the city manager, and you're willing to put up a bunch of money, then you're good because the planning commission will make sure that they recommend approval for your project. And then it seems like city council just rubber stamps it, doesn't ask any questions. And so I'm just wondering why that occurs and where does that money go? Because it's like, it's basically, it's almost like blackmail. So I'll start with you, Victoria.
I don't know if you see every city council meeting, but we quite often go against not only the planning commissioner, but also staff. And then there's times that we don't. What I see is that it's really important, especially since I have an open policy in my office and my staff is top of the line. I mean, when we go out in the field right now, all I hear about is how great my staff is and that they answer all calls, they take care of things, they don't miss a beat. And really, I think as a leader, one of the most important things is your staff. And I have an open-door policy, and I'm getting texts on Facebook, on Twitter, on Instagram about certain things that people want to ask about, like what you're talking about. Like if you had a problem and you have a, you're going to put up a fence or what have you, all you need to do is call my office, and there's an open-door policy. Come in, tell me what your issue is, and that way it's, we understand it. Sometimes people come up in front of council, and they've gone through staff, and they've gone through the planning commission, and they sort of feel defeated, and then they go in front of council. I think before anybody wants to build or do anything, it's really important to reach out to your councilperson. That's how you will see if those are the people that you want to represent them by their open-door policy and their willingness to talk about your issues and help.
Okay, Alan, go ahead.
Yeah, recently in one of the council meetings, there was a gentleman that had not approached his councilman, and he actually shut him down. He's like, nope, we're not going to even talk to you right now, and you need to come and see me, and we need to understand what you're talking about because we're not going to proceed without knowing it. You know, that was councilman career in his ward. And I have to agree with him. I mean, if you don't talk to the people that are going to try and help you, are going to try and redevelop the city because that's one of the responsibilities of the councilman is to redevelopment and reallocation of the buildings. If you don't go talk to them and you don't outline what you want to do, you may be way off of the master plan, and that's just not good for the city.
So I know that earlier you have already mentioned the issues of hearsay and everything that is going on, and I hear you, you know, being very proud of your staff and taking pride in that, and I appreciate that as somebody who's young and probably going to enter that world myself. But I don't see how it could just purely be hearsay if there are multiple anonymous sources at this point to come out and say these things about you. So I would like to either understand why that might have happened. Maybe there's a certain situation where there might have been a miscommunication that you could explain, or just a further explanation other than, oh, this is just hearsay.
Well, unless you have the people here, you have some names and any situations, it is hearsay. Because I've got two staff members that have been with me from the beginning, and if there was a problem, they would come to me and tell me as well. So there could be somebody who, you know, couldn't, didn't handle the job or what have you, and to me, that is hearsay. Unless somebody is here to say that something happened, it's hearsay.
So is it possible that these people are afraid of losing their jobs, and maybe that's why they don't come forward to say something to you?
These people?
The multiple people who have said this about you?
I only have three assistants, and one is a couple of months, and the other two have been with me from the beginning of time. So I, no. Dave, you have any complaints? You're my Chief of Staff. Well, the Chief of Staff would get the complaints, not me, because I have him deal with my staff. So again, I'd rather talk about policy than hearsay, but thanks for the question.
Yeah, and for the record, just to clarify, I know you're Chief of Staff, and I've known you for a long time, and you have, both of you have always been responsive to me. All right, I just want to clear that because we need to get back to policy issues. So now, Michael, you got a question for, we'll start with Alan, please.
Yeah, I have a question for both of you. What's the top three things you would change in your ward? Let's start with Alan this time.
The top three things in the ward right off the bat is I want to open up some of the zoning so we can bring in some of the pod schools, the micro schools, and the charter schools to supplement the school system because our kids deserve a better world. I want to bring in some very much more responsible infill projects because we don't need to have five shoe stores in one strip mall. We could probably put in a sock company or something in there like that. And I definitely want to get a solution or some kind of resolution to the Badlands. And then I have a fourth one because we're, it's an expanding area. We get into the Red Rock area. I want to see that developed properly and not just as houses thrown everywhere. It needs to be developed responsibly, and really, we need like another medical center on the west side of town, so it'd be a great place for it.
So I've been working on a children's hospital with Intermountain and the federal government on some federal land to bring into Ward 2. In the whole Las Vegas Valley, we do not have a children's hospital. So this has been something that has been my goal. My staff and I have been working on it with staff. So that's in the works right now. We secured SNPNA money for an aquatic center. So I don't know if you're aware, but we have the sandpipers, and they went to the Olympics, and we're so proud of them. And since I've been elected, they've asked me if we could somehow get more pools. There's not enough place in the whole valley to train. So we've been working, and we were, finally, after two years, we secured the money, and we're working with the county to see if they can come in with a little more. But we should see that in the works in the next year. The other thing is we're working on one more park right now, which is going to be more of a nature park in Ward 2. So there's a lot of projects that we've been working on. We haven't come out and talked about them as much. I mean, sandpipers are all in with the aquatic center. They've helped out with some of the financing. So we've done a lot of public-private projects that we believe will improve not only the valley, but it's going to improve Ward 2. So we've been fast-working in the last three years. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll ask one more general question, and then I'll be more poignant. What is it that drives both of you? And I want, I need you both to answer this, and I'll start with Alan. Why do you want to be a city councilperson?
I've given my entire life to serve people. I've stood up in the military. I've stood up with the fire department. I've stood up as a deputy sheriff. My drive comes from my children and my family. My family is veterans and cops, and we've always been there to support the people. I've had an uncle that died in Vietnam. I had four that have also served, and my father. My father ended up life as a teacher at Clark High School. My stepmother was a school nurse here. My family's been involved with this valley since 1963. We've seen the greatness of it. We've seen its failures. I know how to get it back to where we need it to be, and I'm going to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan. And I really want to hear your answer, Victoria, because you've been, you've been in a public sphere here in Southern Nevada for a long time. So I'm just really curious of what drives you in particular to want to be a city councilwoman once again.
So I was a businesswoman, as you know. You've probably heard this before. And in 2009, I decided to sell my business, which I did, and get involved with politics to make sure every fiscal conservative I could get elected because I felt that politicians did not have the business perspective. When they needed money, they taxed and regulated you. I came from LA 17 years ago, brought a business here, and I felt like when I came to Nevada, it was becoming a lot like California was. And so no good deed goes unpunished. I got recruited and ran for office. I spent two years in the state legislature. That was a real eye-opener. I was able to work across the aisle and get guardianship passed and the squatter bill. And I learned that my business experience would cross over into public service and having those negotiating skills, working with people. And so as much as I really didn't like the partisan politics, I was able to reach across and get good legislation passed, and that's why I was the Southern Majority Whip. So city council is not partisan. And why I love my job so much is I've been able to accomplish a lot in short amount of years, working with my colleagues, to get good things done. And we're still working on so many good things, I think, for the community as far as the aquatic center, as far as the children's hospital, and things that I think are really important to Nevada. Public safety is number one for me, and I have the support of law enforcement because I've worked with them. We did not defund the police during the riots because I believe you had a balanced council. You had three Republicans, three Democrats, and three Republicans that were extremely pro-law enforcement. My father was in law enforcement. My husband was in law enforcement. And therefore, you know, I understand what they go through and what a hard time they went through during the riots. So I'm very pro, oh, my time's up. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Victoria. Michael?
Mr. Bigelow, it seemed like you had a very physical reaction to some of the things she was saying. Is there anything that you inherently disagree with?
Well, we do have a very solid children's hospital here. UMC is an award-winning facility, and I know it because I take kids there. And I know that we have some outstanding other facilities. Sunrise Hospital also has a children's ward in it that has done amazing things. I went there as a kid, so I would disagree that we don't have a children's hospital here. Yes, absolutely.
With all due respect, we do not have a children's hospital. We have children's ward, and they are fantastic. And not to, you know, say that they're not, but many people in the community have to go out of state for certain services with children, so that is the reason that we're...
So one of the, one of the things I find interesting is a, a lot of people don't want to run for city council. And I appreciate the fact that both of you are running. And then also I really liked the way both of you said, first you need to reach out to your city council member first, right? So I'll, I'll start with you, Alan. What will you do when you're elected to stay engaged with your constituents? And what kind of outreach program would you have to get people to understand? Because it's very unfortunate that most voters and most people don't understand how important city council is. So what kind of outreach program or how would you reach out to the constituents to get them to call you and get in contact with you?
Um, actually, I'm going to compliment Victoria on a couple of things that she's doing in that area. And I, I probably would copy them very much and, and expand on them a little bit. But the Saturday morning breakfasts are a great idea. The weekly emails are amazing. You know, I, I guess I'm more of the guy that's on the ground and I'm going to go out and, and I actually have meetings in the neighborhoods and, and community centers and parks, places that people go, you know, people go to, to like, I don't know, Sonic on a Friday night and go hang out there. Well, take the time and go, that's fine, you know, let's see what's going on. And, and we have those great businesses in Ward Two. We have opportunities to do that. Even if it's things that are already in existence, like movies in the park, take a minute and, and, you know, hey, this is what's going on in the city. You know, let's chat, let's get involved, let's work with the realtors, you know, and we have a housing crisis going on right now. Let's get these guys together and let's, let's get this one under control.
I just wanted to use my notes for this, just to tell you a few of the things that we've done and will continue to do. Cause we think that it's worked really well and we'll always bring in new things if we need them. We've handled over 2,100 constituent concerns and issues. We've hosted over 20 Breakfast Buzz and Ward Two Biz events to connect the Ward Two residents and discuss community issues. I started a small business Saturday. I featured over 110 small businesses on that program. Hosted a COVID resource workshop to help connect small business with all the various funding and resources available when that was needed for businesses, they didn't know where to go. My office mailed out over 20 birthday mailers promoting Ward Two businesses. We launched the Ward Two Art in the Park program. I hope you'll all go, our next one is April 23rd. We've had two so far, this will be our third. Several movie in the park events, twice yearly document shredding and medication disposal events, several suicide prevention events, emergency preparedness event in Ward Two. And we just recently did a senior seminar about guardianship and senior scams. So we are constantly working with people in the community to see what's needed. And we don't mess around, we just plan the events and do them. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question as a real estate broker, for both of you. Where do you guys stand on the moratorium with the increased price of rents? And we'll start with you this time, Victoria.
Well, we've been working with the public, public, private again, for affordable housing. We need more affordable housing, we're working on more affordable housing. This is really important to our community and it's something that we're constantly doing and meeting with the teams about and builders.
That really covers people buying houses. I was on the rental, rental moratorium of rents rising as they have been tremendously.
The moratorium is something the state put.
With or without, what's your thoughts on that?
Simply that we don't have a moratorium anymore and that was implemented by the state during COVID. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I mean now, several people have came to me and their rent was, you know, 1,200 and now it's 2,000.
Right, that's why we've, we were working with builders to get more affordable housing so that people can afford to live in apartments other than the ones that they're paying for now. Like you said, the, the cost of rents are going up. So the only thing we can counter that with is really more affordable housing.
So you're taking people out of houses and then putting them into apartments? Is that what you're getting at?
No, I'm just not sure what the question is, I apologize.
Okay, Alan?
You know, the pandemic put us in a really funny spot in the housing market and I've seen it firsthand. Unfortunately, people are getting just squeezed out of apartments. But I think what we need to do is get our property management groups and our owners of larger properties together. So we said, listen, you know, we understand that you lost a lot of money. It sucked, you know, but we can't kick people out. We can't continue to squeeze them out of these prices. And if we absolutely have to, maybe we need to look at a moratorium for a short period so the market can reset itself and then come back and, and remove it once it has.
Thank you, glad you understood the question.
Okay, I, I'm going to follow up with that though, Alan. So rent control, basically, maybe I'm off base, but that's kind of what I feel like Mr. Broadway is getting at. Rent control is something that is a really popular thing right now and a lot of people have been discussing it. However, rent control, if we're going to do that, needs to work in good times and in bad. So when we had that moratorium, right? So what ended up happening was, okay, you can't be evicted because you can't pay your rent or your mortgage. However, so say that lasted for two years, okay? Now all of a sudden what ends up happening is now your rent, now that the moratorium is over, now all of a sudden your rent doubles because you have to make up for what you missed. So rent control, is there any way either one of you could address it to where it works in good times and bad? So if you're going to have a moratorium, people shouldn't be punished. You, you shouldn't be able to tell somebody, okay, you can miss your mortgage for two years. But, but now your rent is doubled. It's almost like when you buy, we all remember the housing crisis in 2008 when the bubble burst, right? Cause everybody was doing these three year arms where you could afford a house at X amount of dollars, but then in three years, now all of a sudden your mortgage quadrupled. So I would like Victoria to, you know, just, and I know I pretty much answered my own question.
Well, this is, this is the kind of thing that, so the legislature is only in office every other year, as we know. And this is a problem because it affects a lot of city issues. So recently I have started a, a meeting with all legislators to come in and talk to the city lobbyists, talk to us, form relationships. So the last five minutes of the legislative session, we're not on the phone trying to say this is a bad bill for the city. This is one of the issues that I will bring up in our next meeting in Reno. Because these are the kind of things that as a city councilwoman, you know, I'm not going to be able to have right control. I need to work with my, see, see what's going on on the state level, see what their constituents are saying. And if you'd like to meet with me and talk more about this with me, I would appreciate that. I'm actually a licensed Realtor, but I don't work as one. I just hold my license because I'm very busy with my job. The only real estate I've done since I've been in office was buying and selling my own house. I do meet with the realtors, I do have their support and they have come into my office and we've discussed issues that went on during the pandemic and some of the things after the fire that were done. But this is a bigger conversation and I would really love for you to contact me and maybe we can talk more about it. And again, as I meet with the state legislatures after the primary, we can discuss this in more detail.
You know, even as, as attractive as the rent control programs could be in good and bad time, it's still a double edged sword because our constitution in Nevada really regulates what we can do with a property owner. And we have to bear that in mind as we move forward in any of this.
Okay, so I just have one last question. So, and I'll try not to answer my own question, being a moron this time like last time. Alan, so Mrs. Seaman is, she's incumbent and she has been involved in politics for a long time. And that's given her the opportunity to build some really strong relationships. So she is able to make those phone calls and know who to contact. If you get elected, how will you go about building those same connections and relationships that Mrs. Seaman has?
Well, a lot of the relationships I've already developed because I haven't been in the front four of, or the forefront rather of politics. I've actually been supporting a lot of people in their candidacies over the years. I participated in a, a town board, county commissioner, I ran for county commissioner once. I've supported a governor's race and I've helped with a congressional race. So I've developed a lot of those relationships through that over the past probably 15 years now. So they're not new people to me. I've developed relationships with the school system. Of course, my parents were involved with that. And I've got a couple of programs already lined out to help kids that are aging out of the foster programs so that they get the educations that they need to become people in, in our society that are actually successful and productive.
Did you want to just add anything, Victoria, about the relationships you've built and how that is beneficial to Ward Two? Or did you want to just leave it at that? Sorry, Victoria.
Being in politics doesn't give you those relationships. It's reaching out and establishing those friendships over a period of time. And I, I work well with other people. What I don't know, I don't know, what I know, I know. So I am always open to discussing state, city issues with my colleagues and that's about it.
Okay, we have, we have time for one more question from the panel. Does anybody have another question?
Yeah, Ms. Seaman, thank you for telling me that you're a Realtor. I wasn't aware of that. So I have a question for you, Realtor to Realtor. And my question is, what's your thoughts when the hiatus came out on foreclosures and evictions? Okay, we sent stimulus money to people, flat screens got sold at a market rate at Walmarts. And have you ever heard any repercussions from the people that own the houses? I mean, the houses, they have a mortgage due. There was no hiatus on property taxes to my knowledge. If I'm wrong with that, tell me. And then as well, HOAs and HOA foreclosures are still effective in Nevada.
I think some of that legislation was changed on the HOAs back in 2015 because that, there was a big problem during the foreclosure period where they went in to do a little bit of legislation to let people stay in their homes. And it ended up that the banks couldn't foreclose. I think we were one of the few that did that and we had the longest recovery. And that's one of the bills that I tried to fix when I was there in 2015. I believe it happened two, one or two sessions before. And we were unsuccessful with getting that changed. But legislation has changed since then, as far as I know. But you know, this is the problem with, you know, policy is that you have a good intention and there are always unintended consequences. And being in the legislature that gave me a lot of experience in the city council to say, put the brakes on that because there may be unintended consequences. One of the ones as a Realtor you might be familiar with is after the Alpine Fire, the city tried to go in and have everybody register and do yearly investigations. And I worked with the realtors and kind of quash that to buildings that were built way before the, you know, same time period as the Alpine motel because there were so many unintended consequences and it really didn't apply. So that is one of the things I'm very cognizant about as not just a Realtor, but as a legislator is that look at the unintended consequences before we step into an ordinance or a, in Carson City, it's legislature. So that's how I am with it.
Can you, can you answer the other two with regards to property taxes and, you know, mortgages? Let's just say that Tlicia and I own an LLC and we have seven homes and we have mortgages on them. And they're in HOAs, let's forget the HOA, but they all have property tax due. And then we have them rented out and now the renters don't have to pay us.
Oh, when, when they're in there without?
Correct.
Well, those are laws that need to be changed through the state legislature. As far as, if there's anything that needs to be tweaked, it would be through the state legislature. And the property tax, there have been times when the properties go up or down. For example, during the recession and you still had the high property taxes. And I think, I'm not really a hundred percent sure, but I think you could turn in the value of your home and you're, they would weigh that. So I'll check into that because I'm not quite sure about how it's working right now.
Okay, with that, I'm just going to make a quick statement and then I'll let both of you have your two minutes for your closing statement. First off, I just want to thank both of you very much. I by nature am somebody who believes strongly in Reaganomics. I think trickle down economics works. So you guys both have a really tough job because at the city council level, it's almost like you got to go from the bottom up and not a lot of people understand how important the city council is. So I just want to say, I greatly appreciate both of you for being willing to run for city council because it's way more important than people realize. With that, I will go ahead and Victoria, if you want to do your two minute closing?
Thank you for that because a lot of people don't know that we don't have Home Rule. So a lot of the stuff, the statutes that you're talking about come through the state legislature. And again, you know, I was always in, I'm a big believer in less government is better. But when you're working at the city and you've got a legislature that meets every biennial and you've got to live with the consequences, it's really tough. So that's why we like, we would love to have Home Rule, but we don't. So a lot of things are dictated by the state down to us. But we do have control over funding the police and, you know, things like that. So we do, there are some things that we can work with for public safety. I appreciate you having me here. I appreciate what you guys do and I'll continue to do my job as a public servant. I love what I do. I think I love city council because you can actually get things done. There are six people and the mayor, so it's really a lot easier. There's no caucuses, so it's a lot easier to work with your colleagues and reason and get things done and talk about things. Other than that, I'm a wife and a mother and I have my little dogs at home. And so thank you so much again for having me. I really appreciate the veterans endorsement means the world to me due to a family of veterans and law enforcement. So appreciate you.
You know, just real quickly, I wanted to touch on your question about the taxes. You have home taxes and, and the HOAs had a super majority basically claim on all these properties when they were going through the processes. That was removed recently. The taxes aren't being paid anyway when you're not getting paid. So it would be really easy to show a hardship to the city council and possibly get an abeyance there so that it wasn't something that took into hardship for the, the property owners. And maybe, you know, we can make them a little bit easier for the people for their rents and things to rent those houses. I've been a soldier, I've walked the line, looked at the enemy in the eye and I've come back safe. We have people that are on deployment right now, so that's why I wore the shirt tonight. Remember those deployed? My, my family's been here all since 63. I've raised my children here, my grandchildren here and my dog too. You know, I, I have a small business that has gone in and risked my personal safety to make sure that homeowners here in Las Vegas can get their rates and things reduced so that they could actually have lower rates on their, their payments. I'm ready to go to work. I'm not, my work schedule doesn't stop at five o'clock. My work schedule doesn't stop because we're off on Friday. I'm here, my phone number is posted everywhere. Everybody has it, it's easy to get ahold of me. And I'm ready to go to work and get it done. I want to be here for everybody. I want to, I want to take care of our first responders because they have a special place in my heart because my family has been them and my family still is. My daughter's a fourth generation cop. So we're going to make sure that people are taken care of. We're going to make sure they're not taxed. I've signed a no tax pledge and I'll never raise taxes while I'm in office.
Okay, I, I want to thank you both for coming in. I know it's, it's late and it, running for office. it, running for office is exhausting. It's one of the hardest things you can possibly do. So I want to thank both of you very much for your commitment to the community because you have to have a commitment to the community in order to take on running for office. So with that being said, uh, that will, uh, conclude our endorsement interview for, uh, Las Vegas City Council Ward Number Two. Thank you.
Thank you.